Dear our God, we thank you for your continued blessings upon all the citizens of Dillon. Dear our God, we thank you, our God, for our mayor, city council, for our city manager, our city attorney, our department head, and citizens on tonight. Dear our God, please bless us on tonight to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. In everything we do, we pray to be kept to give your name the glory to all in the praise. But it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Welcome everybody here this evening. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion second.
All the favor.
I oppose.
Motion to approve a minute from the September 12th.
Take the lead.
Regular scheduled meeting. And October 17th special call meeting. That second?
Yes.
All the favor.
I oppose.
Thank y'all. Let me start with Veterans Day. The great Veterans Day Friday. So if you don't go, maybe you want to go one year and just see how that Veterans Day works out there at Veterans Day Square. It was a real good event, always is. The city hosts a Veterans Day breakfast at the high school. And the principal out there is really getting that student body in to take, participate in that. You've got all the kids to go to that program now, I think it's their first year. But I want to also, like I do every year, touch on the Dillon High School junior ROTC, who is fantastic. I think I mentioned before that that ROTC in Dillon High School, last time I heard it was sometimes 25% of the student population out there. Great participation. They are first class. John Sats just let him continue to be a first-class junior ROTC out there. So we had a great Veterans Day. Our Veteran of the Year was Bobby McLean, who was Assistant Police Chief this year. Bobby's done a lot with the city. He's also, in the last month, been real busy, well, every day, probably 12 to 15 hours a day, cutting down trees from this hurricane off people's houses. He's really gone above and beyond the call with the hurricane helping people. So I'm glad to see that. Street crews. I was in Flarks today, and I was in a heavily populated neighborhood, high-density neighborhood between Coit Street and Palmetto. It just, I just noticed, you could not help not to notice, all the yard debris down to everybody's yard, just stacked up right in front of the houses. You ain't seen that much here, on the yard debris. And what you do is not there that long, unless we can't pick it up right now. The garbage service, I don't think it missed a beat. If they did, it weren't but a couple days after the hurricane, they got back on cycle schedule. They just, our crew has just been outstanding on all this work. You act like you aren't surprised anymore from the work they do, and right on, you see what they're doing, how they're going about it. Glenn and Burton, I went out Friday looking at some drainage lines and trees. First time I saw the state out there Friday morning. But I think they've gone ahead, regardless of the states in town or not, they went ahead and started clearing as much as they can. I can't remember how many tons they said we sent to the landfill, but it was a astonishing amount. Thank the county, of course, the landfill has been able to carry it out there free of charge on yard debris. Good. But it's just been insight to see what our crew. Mentioned it through our special call meeting from the police department, the fire department, code department, everybody. Just been first class and an A-plus effort from all involved. Then now, they do it well, but they do it with a great attitude. They do it with attitude, they do. And I'll tell you what, the citizens out there have noticed, because I'm constantly being told, you know, guys are going at it. No one commented the other day on the guy that drove the knuckle through the truck, just they never see him not working. So that really goes for the whole bunch of them. You rarely see it. The garbage truck, wherever. There has been notice. There have been notice out there, that's a good thing. Bill's to have his department out there on the backup to that Dillon. That kind of makes them feel good about what they're doing. Now, with that said, I still, Glenn will probably touch on, there's still a lot of problems. Drainage lines stocked up from equipment, still working from equipment that's barely rolling. You know, that van truck that's clearing these drainage lines is, it looks like, it sounds like to me it's on its last leg. It's flooded. We've had to flush, I don't know how many pieces of equipment out. How old is that? Is old, I think.
Ninety-eight.
The sweeper?
No, 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 it's a flushing truck. That might be a van truck. Very vital, but already am, I said.
We involved that. I think, if I'm not mistaken, about the same time we put in that line to Harbor Frey originally back in the late nineties.
How much was those?
You don't want to know.
Quarter million.
Probably.
And we can't do without it if you're in the water sewer business, so.
Well, we're not asking for that tonight.
Okay. You know, it's probably coming.
Yeah, it's coming.
But you can't not go without it. That's part of the deal, that's a vital piece of equipment. And I saw it in action. And I was asking for it in the middle of the hurricane over in our neighborhood, in the circle. And it was a big disappointment when they told me it got flooded and had to be hauled in. But anyway, I thought I'd bring that up. Two months ago, we really brought out our plan on Main Street, trying to pump up life in Main Street. No doubt, the hurricane was punching the gut with Main Street. We've been temporarily set back. I have the town, but I walk up and down Main Street every day, going to the post office, get my mail rather than driving, I walk. So I talk a lot, I'm going both directions. I've only found one store on Main Street that weren't flooded. And they were flooded, they just weren't flooded bad, that was the hardest part of it. Every other one, you walk out, they're pulling up floors, pulling up carpet. Some of them haven't done it yet. It's tough. It's tough. So they're getting there, it's slow, which pushed us back on Main Street, but I think we're about to get to that point where we can get back at it and nagging one of the things I was thinking of, instead of waiting on these people, I'd like to see the plan with the awnings and stuff, the incentive plan. I'd like to get it where we have somebody in the city to go hand it to them. We're going to have, so they'll go and hand it to them.
I will need an allocation of some money, a budget.
Okay, that's what we need to do.
I know what I need to do, I just need to have a budget.
Okay. Well, I need some money.
What?
I need some money.
Well, I need a budget, yes.
Well, I want to offer it to them.
Given the state of how they.
And I know, we got to get you something to hand to them.
Yes.
They all aren't going to act when they see a match, but I want to help the ones that want to do it. It's time. And especially now, especially now. I'd like to see specific packets to the businesses, we'll get you something to hand to them, we'll budget. It is Main Street.
Well, last year, we budgeted three thousand, and that went with two projects. So you see, it takes a good bit more than that.
That's okay.
That's two awnings, really, in two different buildings.
I'd like to triple that. Y'all probably saw the editorial I put in the paper, the theater, Dillon Historic Theater County, the Dillon County Historic Theater was also damaged, it's closed. I've already contacted the county, I've gotten with a couple of county councils, one that own board, to go in and see what the city, the county, and the theater board can come together and find out where that theater is going and where it's headed. It is the very fabric of our society here in Dillon. It's the fabric of our community. And Dillon, the city of Dillon, especially in the downtown historic district, we need a win. We need to see something going positive, and theater's the best place to start.
Well, why don't we show the county? Why don't we show the community? Get the county and the city together and let's talk what we can do to help with the theater.
That's what we do.
I mean, together.
That's what we do. Now, I've already done that.
And I'm saying, we all need to talk to the county.
I've started that.
Where you going?
That's what we're trying to turn.
Getting a date in mind, we all sit down and talk.
Yeah, well, I'd like to have a committee from each of the city, and I'm sure the county has their committee to handle those type of things. I think you need to know, well, first of all, if there's a theater board, and about who is responsible for what with the theater. You've got that first, you know, I want everybody to be clear on this. You know, it is the county, the Dillon County Theater.
Nice, it is.
Well.
They have a nonprofit. It is a true.
To who, Huns?
The Dillon County Theater Association, which is a nonprofit.
They have a hard time with it, if you're going back to it.
I'm curious to know, the A-Tech money is what we give the county theater, correct? And you wonder what the county gives, Tom? As far as that kind of money?
Yeah, I would think so, because they have a very pot.
I'm just curious, I mean.
Honestly, the county's giving it, the city's giving it again.
Right.
You know, I mean.
They give it twice, but that's okay.
And that's to be used for equipment upgrades, and I don't think it can be used to put on productions.
I don't think so.
I think it's just for equipment upgrades.
I think that's part of the reason for sitting down and meeting, and to restructure the whole thing, to utilize, the best way to utilize the money. I mean, they're paying someone to go open the door, you know, and they need that. I think some money can be saved by a city, county, somebody kind of overseeing the schedule. That's just where you start. But if you don't handle these minor, and they're, right now, they're fairly minor, repairs, they're going to turn into major repairs, it's just going to deteriorate like any other building. I've been trying to talk to a fellow that I know that's tied up with Shaw Industries on the carpet, we've gotten back to him. We fixed, or I had a fellow come in and fix the wall the best he could, that was, it looks like stucko, it was not stucko, it was peeling off, but he did patch it up and ran it all the way down the side, we got that done. Glenn always has the city helping with the bathrooms, that's our ongoing problem. And upstairs, where they do the production, they're part of the wall that's falling down. So that whole thing, major, major money. That thing's been here for a hundred years, I guess, with the city. And it's like I put down, not every child is fired to play basketball, or baseball, some of them is fired to go out there, show their talents on the theater. They should be given that opportunity. You don't have a Christmas program this year, I'd love to have seen one at the theater. The Veterans Day program just got moved, it's always there. The theater is heavily used, primarily by churches in the last year or so, it seems. So that ought to be number, you know, one of the top things on our agenda with the county, because I've already contacted the county, we want to sit down and see where we go with that. It's got to go somewhere, somebody's got to kick that off, or it's not going to get done.
I have lead fundraising efforts to do the renovation of that theater initially. We've got a lot invested, and you're right, it is a maintenance nightmare just due to the nature of the building. But I'd be glad to help anyway, I'd be glad to work with the county, serve as a liaison to the board, to help in any way.
If you do that with the board, that'd be a big thing. And I'll give the county, and I'll give the board, and the city, the rest of the city You know, I talked to the new county administrator, Mr. Berry, he goes, you're exactly right, I mean, what signal does that send? Poor. Lion and Gordon and any other business downtown, if you let your behavior go, what signal does that send? I can tell you, it's poor. I know we suspended bids for equipment, I don't know when we're going to start looking at equipment again, but I'm sure the bidding process will come back online.
Yeah, we've already started.
Somebody brought up about the ditch maintenance plan, said I'd bring that up tonight. However often to survey a ditch that runs through town, it might be clean, but I also sense one of the state handles a lot of that, too. I really got asked about one at Walgreens one day, me and her husband, very nice, they hit me kind of hard at first, then they backed down, but it was the, they backed down, meaning it's understood that we're doing all we can, but it was that ditch behind Walgreens that all those houses are on. I think what saved those houses there is that water ran over Eighth Avenue into Elizabeth Lane Park. But I think that ditch is owned by the state, I'm not sure. Not while we have a maintenance plan to require cleaning the ditches out, or light nor deepen or whatever, but we don't, I think we should, it's not my expertise, I'm just asking.
Is the runoff drains the city?
Actually, all storm drainage is state-owned. And storm drainage is for roads and roads on, as we walked before. We own very few roads in the city, most of them are state.
But when it gets clogged up, we have to ask work.
We normally do it, and we use what we call the van truck for that purpose. Back when I was down, after the storm, first call we made was to the highway department, said they have it, they don't have it.
So we do it, or doesn't really get done, I mean, and we suffer, of course, that's why.
Didn't we have something with solar water conservation thing for a number of years ago?
Well, you had them, you had what you had, your watershed commission, but that's pretty much gone. You know, they don't really have that anymore, if I remember correctly.
They're just trying to turn that over.
Yeah, they didn't have any money to do anything with it. Absolutely.
Are you happy to do that, a great bid, though, Burley's cleaning out his storm drains? And do you keep a running tab on how often you clean one out, like on Madison Street or Elizabeth Lane?
We pretty much, we do it by complaint basis.
Complaint basis.
There's a lot of catch bases. And I, I think it's thousands of them out there, probably. And most of the time, we know the bad areas, we try to hit those areas before a storm or things like that. We ride around, and you know, we get heavy rains, guys ride around and check them, and clean them off, take note of where some stocked up. When we get able to go back, we'll go back and clean them. But yes, anybody, you know, has a problem, sees a drain stocked up, calls. One of the ways to possibly eliminate, it wouldn't eliminate all of it, but to eliminate a bunch of problems that we do have, especially catch bases, open ditches is a different story. Because what we'll find in ditches, tires, basketball goals, bicycles, pressure cars, things of that nature. So where we have catch bases, you know, that's debris that's coming from yards or from trees in public right of way. So one of the ways that we could eliminate some of that, which could be a hard egg to the property owners or homeowners, is instead of putting out your yard debris, as we allow right now, you know, on the right of way, is put your yard debris in bags. But then we have an issue with landfill accepting that, so I mean, there's not really a perfect scenario to do that. And how much time do I want to add your stuff up to put on the curbside? Because we also have people, whether it's homeowners or contractors who do yard work, we see a lot that blows debris back into the road. And if we see it, we try to educate them, don't do that, because all you're doing is putting debris right where it's going to go down into the storm ground, so. It's an education on both sides, ours and the homeowners and property owners, on the best way of handling yard debris. I mean, you can't control leaves that come off trees during this time of year, especially on public right of ways, but I don't know the answer to how to curtail the debris that gets into our storm ground.
It's a tough thing to do. And last thing, I got, with the hurricane, I know Clay Young has now stepped aside. I want to thank Clay Young for all he's done for Dillon County. I read the Dillon Herald, October 6th edition, you know, and they stated he brought more progress to Dillon County under his leadership than any other county official in years. And I want to thank him for all he's done, Dillon's better for him. Mr. Young, at the same time, on which Rocky Berry and most success, his success is our success, and we wish him well, think he'll do an outstanding job. I don't want to say that, Clay's a happy man, I know, I miss him. I wish him the best. It's all of them today, in fact, he came, but I haven't seen him in a while, he looked happier than he's ever looked today. So he's doing well. So that's all I got.
Just on the agenda, as I mentioned to you earlier, we have listed Ms. Linda Wallace, who's going to be here to break counsel on PD Coalition, she was actually scheduled for October, that's the month of recognition for spousal abuse and child abuse. But since we didn't meet in October at our regular meeting, we had put her down for November and talked with her late Thursday, and they're going to come back in April. But didn't want the council to know, they appreciate the support that the city gives to PD Coalition. But she just didn't show up, there was, they were going to be showing up in October during their recognition. I have a list, laundry list, of projects that we have been involved in for the last two or three years, and projects that we're fixing to start, just want to brief you as much as I can on those. As you remember, a year or so ago, we talked about the river bridge relocation, we had to relocate our wastewater line that ran underneath the river along the bridge, as I told you here in the past several months, that project on our end has been completed. The other projects, Purdue and Commerce Drive, lift station upgrades that were started about six months ago, are almost 95% complete. Just waiting on what is known as a SCADA system, which alerts Hardy when things are out of whack, those lift stations. We're also, yeah, we're also in the process of, with the new lift station and Commerce Lift Station, that's where we gather a lot of odor, and that was one of the reasons for the subgrade. We're now in the process of making sure there's the appropriate percentage of, is it lime?
Yes, sir.
Being fed to that system at the Purdue Lift Station, so it cuts down the smell, especially at the Commerce Lift Station. Here in the last two weeks, we've seen a decrease in the smell, we haven't got to the exact point where we're going to be. So, you know, that's just going to be a project that takes a little longer than what we, an issue, a thought that we take to get you that smell under control. We think the process that we're using is the correct process, just got to know the exact amount of lime that we actually inject on a daily basis at Purdue Lift Station to cut down the, is it sulfur?
Hydrogen sulfur.
Hydrogen sulfur. Last week, it was smelling bad at Commerce Drive. And if you remember correctly, and Mike Hannah was here a year or two ago talking about it, when you smell it, it's okay, it's when you don't smell it, and you know it's there, that's when you're in trouble. So we're just trying to make sure we add enough to get where we need to be to cut that odor back. The Oracle Basin and wastewater plant is another project that we've been working on, it is also about 95% complete. Contractors have to come back in and do a punch list, and hopefully, first year, that'll be completed, I assume. We had a sinkhole during the storm back on Deerwood, and I think we reached it to you at our special meeting back in October. That is now being completed.
What was that cost?
About $35,000 is what that cost. However, now, we're not finished. We went as far as the contractor felt comfortable in trying to replace hole, was it, it was a cement pipe? And then this pipe has nothing to do with the project. This is just normal flow from our other users. We're making the assumption that's probably been there 40-plus years, yes, sir. It was eaten up, and every time we went to go replace a joint, it break. So we finally got to a good stopping point, but our next goal was to come back and either do one or two things with that line. What was known as slip line, and what was the other one?
Pipe bursting.
Pipe bursting.
Pipe flat.
Bursting. What you do is just put in another pipe, without having to dig up the whole project or the whole line, you come in, and it's like you bore it under and you just go through the existing line. Or the slip line would be the same thing, just putting in another type of material to go in the same location.
How much lime had it replaced?
Yes, inside the pipe.
How much lime had to be replaced?
I think it was about 50 foot. Yeah. But we feel certain of it's probably 50 or more feet that need to be replaced along But that would be one of our next projects, but that has been completed. The state helped us there by taking the cost to resurface the road, we didn't have to pay the resurface the road cost, the state did that on our behalf, which was nice on this part. We have a bid opening scheduled for December 1st for the water tank. And we'll come back in our meeting in December to bring you the ordinance for the SRF loan that we're creating. That'll be at our meeting in December, so at that time, we'll also have the actual cost to build and install a water tank at the Highway 34 water plant.
Am I right, that's $700?
What's that?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand?
Well, that was, that was also include bypass pumps. We had, what, three of those?
Three of them.
Three bypass pumps.
How long did you run them, Howard?
The whole time, about a week or so.
Insurance claims that we talked to you about back in the week after the storm hit, our insurance adjuster has been here, pretty much has looked at everything that we've We've heard back, have you heard anything back, from FEMA?
Yes, yes, we're just out here.
So they have submitted some information back to us. We do have any big costs at the city shop where Burke's located, as you remember, we had roughly three feet of water inside the building there. We in the process now of tearing out walls and getting the mold out and taking everything out that was wet due to that flood. We're looking at an estimated cost of around $50,000 to complete that at the city shop. Now, that will be, has been turning into our insurance and also on the FEMA side, so we should collect some reimbursement on those projects there.
Okay, back to that, is blood covered in our tank?
I don't know that the building is, but the vehicles are, am I correct?
It's covered by.
Our insurance?
Yeah.
For vehicles?
Yes.
But the building is not?
For blood insurance. We didn't need any blood insurance, because it's not in the flood area. But they are going to reimburse us.
Our insurances?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
They have not turned a stack, no.
Ain't turned a stack? No, they haven't proved it. We have not received a denial, but that also goes back to through the FEMA process that we apply for on that side.
FEMA must be different for business or governments than they are for private industry.
Yes, because if you remember correctly, governments were declared disasters before individuals were. We actually were declared, from a government standpoint, two or three days after the storm, for individual, individuals and businesses were actually declared about a week after. And that was a part of the number, if I remember correctly, I threw out, what, a million, five or something like that, our October meeting, of our damages that were going to be turned into FEMA. So that would be one of the portions that we're looking at to be reimbursed. Council on Aging Building, which the city owns, we had flooding there. Council on Aging Building, which the city owns, we had flooding there. Minimum damage even worth seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars. And all that was, was having to go in, tear out carpet and some walls to get cleaned out and aired out and then mold resistance applied to the inside of the walls and then build those walls back. If I remember correctly, they took out about three, four feet of wall from the floor up due to the flooding there. We also had some roof damage on our house out at the spray field. Had heard back on that one yet. And the Wellness Center had some damage to its roof. In fact, they were there today actually repairing it. They came in probably two or three weeks ago and did some, some minor repairs, but they were back today to complete that repair. And it was just a, on the roof over the gymnasium area, you got, make sure to use the right term, the hips and the covering of that hip. It's got that pointed area. That flew off, so they came back and put in a new metal piece over that to, to cover those holes.
I'm curious, have we dealing just with more insurance stuff?
Yes. Just our, our, just thirty minutes will say shit.
And then FEMA will look in after what the insurance does, then FEMA will look at helping us with what's left.
That is correct.
Now, is FEMA going to also help with some of the costs for debris removal?
They will help from our labor costs and they will help with equipment. We have to track and keep up with the days that we, we did certain things, what equipment we used and the manpower hours that we used. Uh, we don't, that, that's one of the things I believe the county has done over the years in doing this. They don't charge us for debris removal to their, to their site because they in turn request those to be abolished. So, we'll get it on equipment and labor costs that we can show that is used for debris removal. And that's the same thing where the state brought in their contractors. That's what they're here for. They, they're going to have to the same pot of money to be reimbursed. Now, they used, I believe, Allen O'Leary's on Three Eleven South. That's where they were taking their debris, whereas we took ours to, to the county bank. And don't know the actual totals, but we did a thousand tons, a hundred thousand tons?
Thousand.
A thousand tons, um, which, you know, quick math of two million pounds. And there's still a good bit, good bit out there. We've got now grown tree stumps that we don't know that we got anything to pick up with. Hopefully, the crowd that's working with the state is coming back to get some of those. Now, we do need to, to make mention that, and Betsy, I hope you would put this in the paper also, that we've picked up as much as we're going to be able to pick up off of private property. From here on out, if you're having trees cut, not due to, they were knocked down due to the storm, but you're afraid to have trees in your yard, we can't pick those up. It's just, you're paying the contractor now to take those trees out of your yard and by our own ordinance, they're supposed to take that debris off. So, if you're cutting trees as of today, that contractor needs to take that debris off. The county is still not charging us, but they can call tomorrow and, and our time is going to be. But if you're now cutting trees, that is your contractor and your responsibility to have those debris removed from the right away and from your property and properly disposed of.
Glenn, back in your back, you said that we do have flood insurance on our equipment? Because you said before we did have flood.
I don't know that we have flood insurance, but our insurance is looking to cover.
Any piece of equipment that has physical damage on your, on your core of vehicle that has comprehensive coverage?
We cover that.
Including flood. Buildings are a whole different story, but.
Vehicles are different.
Vehicles are covered, flood is covered under comprehensive coverage. So, if you have comprehensive collision covered in.
Which we have on every vehicle, which is something that, I'm glad you brought both of you, your question and your comments, so, that we've done for years and we've got to look at maybe doing something different. But every vehicle we own, whether it's twenty years old or two weeks old, is fully covered. Um, we know that we've got some police cars that have been totaled due to the, to the hurricanes. We're probably not going to get five hundred dollars?
Probably not.
Yeah. Five hundred dollars off of that vehicle is what they're going to give us for. But now that vehicle's probably fifteen years old. I don't know if it's really a smart way, and I've got to look and see what our cost is to have that full coverage on the older vehicles versus having minimums of. Is it, is it worth our, the name for the car?
Well, and I wanted to ask too, I mean, we was in a rush when we came in our emergency meeting. The newest piece of equipment we had that we lost, can you tell me what that was?
Garbage truck. Right now, we've been able to repair most things. A few pieces of equipment that, you know, got so bad in electronics that it just can't repair. But right now, we got a list, we're working with the, you know, adjuster I talked with today, who's been in contact with Janet. We're going to go over each piece individually. Is it fixed or how much do we, will we reimburse you? They're allowing us so much money to fix each piece of equipment with us paying for the old change or, or paying for the repairs. That's kind of what we're seeing.
But like Dr. Wallace, he just elaborated on our garbage truck.
We got it fixed.
We're good to go with that.
Yes. Okay. And whatever the cost was to repair that, they will pay us a reimbursement on that. Um, probably, right now, of all the equipment we've got on, on, at Burke's place that we probably don't have a good handle on, it would be the, um, bucket truck is not now operational since the storm. Is, is that the shop? Where is it in Florence?
Yes, sir.
It's in Florence, being checked out to see what, what problem is with that, which is probably, oh, is that three years old?
I think it's two thousand twenty.
It's a three, four-year-old piece of equipment, which is very important piece of equipment. We're talking about hanging Christmas lights today. But, um, yeah, that's probably, I'm, I'm, that's probably our most expensive piece of equipment.
But we're anticipating on being able to save the, the piece of equipment.
Yes. We've, we've been able to save almost everything except for the Bobcats, which was a big loss. And that was a very handy piece of equipment that helped us during the storm. And we had four of them that probably will be totaled off. And then we've got four or five cars, um, that was flooded, that have been totaled. Um, the biggest thing is, you know, when you run them, you know, a couple of weeks, you think you got it fixed and your starter goes out, alternator goes bad, and where the water got in and corroded them and burned them up. So, there's little problems like that you have to deal with. But we're, we're in better shape than we were when we talked to you on October seventeenth. We know a whole lot more than what we knew at that time. Overall, as we mentioned, debris's still out there. Just, folks, just be patient with us. We're trying to get to it as, as quickly as, as possible. Heavy, heavy debris, i.e. these big tree stumps, um, those are going to take some time. Just because right now, the state doesn't want us, with our TRACO on their vote, and unless we can do something different, unless they're going to pick them up, they'll sit there until we can figure out how we're going to pick up these big stones. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to thank the city again for picking up the debris because it saved everybody out there money. It's, the contractors, the subcontractors, I know they appreciated it, which gave the homeowner a much better price on the trees. They had to take it off. So, things kind of roll around and helps benefits. Uh, Maggie, anything you want to?
Lynn made me make a list.
Yeah.
So, Todd mentioned that back on, um, September twenty-seventh, we had a meeting with some people downtown, some of the store, store owners, and it really went well. They had some things to tell us and we had some things to tell them. The very next week, the hurricane hit, so we didn't have time to do much of anything. Uh, if you all haven't been to J.D. McLeod's office at one twenty-seven West Main, you need to go. Well, I don't know what it looks like now, but it was an incredible job of him rehabbing that whole little tiny building for an office. It really looked good and I know he's got a lot of work to do to it. But he's got a lot of good ideas. We found several people that are interested in our Main Street project, and if we can just get back together, we'll be able to do it. Uh, on the eighteenth, Todd mentioned about Main Street, the Main Street Program, which is a national program. I called South Carolina Main Street Program and requested that they send two people here to talk to us about that program. And so, we can decide if you all want to be a part of it or not. But they will come and, rather than reading a piece of paper, explain what it's about. Um, Benny and I worked on a revision of the two thousand eight preservation tax credit, which I brought to you maybe two months ago. So, we've got that pretty well ready to go. Um, we need to get it back before Board of Architectural Review and Planning and Zoning, and hopefully will come to you all in January. But that's a tremendous savings with the way the buildings look now, because they would be appraised at what the value is now. So, we've got several people interested in that. One homeowner and three businesses. So, we just need to get that implemented with the new figures in it instead of the oh-eight figures. Um, on the seventh, Chief Lane, Ryan Barry and I went to Columbia to look into a JAG grant. So, we are going to be applying in January for police cars. So, it won't be a hundred of them, might like four.
That's the same thing, more, do you want?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know what grant it was that they got. I know the base last year.
Mm-hmm. Well, there are several. So, this is one that we apply, that we, we can apply for. Um, next, this coming weekend, we have holiday goodness at the Wellness Center. Uh, there's also a Humane Society Chili Cook-Off for the benefit of the Humane Society. After that is Arbor Day. We lost our Christmas tree, not due to the hurricane, it just died. And so, Bert removed it and we've been looking for a new Christmas tree, which will be placed back where the old one was, just past the fountain. And I have not found one yet. Um, I talked to Lynn about, did he want to do the Rockefeller Center thing with buying a tree nobody else can sell, cut it, bring it and just have it there for the holidays? But we're going to have to discuss about that. I mean, the tree that I found would be free, but it would, it's life, there would be no life to it. And it's hard to stand up a tree that big. So, we'll work on that. The tree that Lois suggested was an eastern red cedar that doesn't have all the issues with fungus and bugs that the other trees have. So, that might be a way to go. Conway never planted a tree. They always have a cutoff Christmas tree because they put it in a location that there's no dirt. After that, we have a Polar Express trip, and that's on December third. And then we'll be done.
How you going to work that out with the air?
With what?
How you going to work that out with the air?
They're going to have to stand out on platform and get wet.
All right.
I just, I don't have a choice.
Oh, I appreciate that also.
Mm.
Thank you. If I have any questions on that. Um, Mr. Earl, I thought I had you early. Got in the middle?
That's okay. I can come at any time, speak as long as you want me to. I'm in y'all's booth. Um, I've got a lot of good news, a lot of need and very little money.
That's my story.
As I get ready to educate everyone on. Um, Mayor Davis, Lynn, City Council, thank y'all for having me today. My name is Earl Gleason. I am the chairman of the Transportation Committee in Dillon County. We administer C funds for the county. Um, I've had this role since two thousand and fourteen at Mr. Stacy Griffin's untimely death. I've served on that board for roughly ten years before he, he passed away. And, um, I was fortunate enough to be named chairman of a role that is very important, a board that is very important in Dillon County, and very little is known about it. So, I'm glad that y'all asked me to be here today, uh, to kind of talk a little bit about what we do. And, uh, for any of the city council members, if y'all have a question during this time, just raise your hand. I'd be glad to stop what I'm doing and answer. Um, but what we do is administer C funds. What are C funds? Uh, C fund program has been around probably since the nineteen twenties, and it's been tweaked and refined since then, uh, and to the present state of where it is now. And, uh, I think roughly since ninety-one, it's been about the same. Um, but what did change in early nineties is every council, or every county was able to form a county transportation committee, which was actually a very good thing because it gave the counties local autonomy to make decisions on what they thought was the best roads to resurface or to pave. Um, and somewhere around that time as well, uh, the, the funding formula was changed. At one point, most of the money we would, the county would, uh, Transportation Committee would decide, you know, the money, but it was, the money had to always be spent with the local DOT. And right now, uh, that is not the case. The money comes from the state and we keep seventy-five percent of that to spend as our board chooses to spend, and twenty-five percent goes to the local DOT, i.e. Mitchell Carter and his crowd. And that is to fund state roads within the county. Um, where we get our money from is the gasoline tax in South Carolina, and that there is where the problem is. Have it had a tax increase or what I like to call a user fee, because I don't like to use the term tax on gas because it is, you know, it's a user fee. You use the roads, you pay the tax, and when you buy the gas and you help maintain what you're tearing down when you drive down the road. But, um, we are one of the lowest taxes in the nation, so I'm a strong advocate of telling people to encourage your local representatives and state representatives that, you know, we do need a gas tax or user fee, uh, applied or to be increased. Uh, plus, you have to consider that cars are much more energy efficient since the nineteen eighties when our last gas tax increase came about. So, you're really getting less for the buck. And South Carolina, believe it or not, the big, I think like forty-first in, in size in, in the nation, has one of the largest networks of roads in the nation, which is, is amazing. You know, there's not many dirt roads. You think there is when you're sat there scraping them. But as, you know, in South Carolina and Dillon County, there's a lot of paved roads. But we do get our money from our gasoline tax. Dillon County, another thing you may not know, is a donor county. That means of all the gasoline tax collected in Dillon County, it exceeds what the state average would be is allocated to each county. There's a formula in this book here, the C fund program, which is our bible. And, uh, Glenn, I'm just going to present this to you as evidence, and you can show that to the city council. And also, um, we have a county council of Dillon County Transportation Committee, that's our bible, and this is the formula that we use. I have to go by to decide which roads are repaid or resurfaced. But, um, Dillon County being a donor county, like I said, we have more money coming in that we actually get back, but we do get some of that back after the formula is formulated. And to make a long story short, Dillon County gets roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in C funds. Well, on face value, that sounds like a lot of money, until you start doing the math to deciding how much it costs to resurface a road and how much it costs to pave a road. I brought some figures with me, and these are South Carolina DOT figures, they're not mine. Um, to pave one mile of road, you're looking at a base cost of five hundred thousand dollars. And when you consider you only get eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's not much money, folks. Um, and then you still have to base that road on drainage issues because the criteria for paving a road is, you know, they'll do it, but at what cost do you have to do it? Because drainage, some things have to be fixed. How, how strong of a base do you have existing? In other words, how much is existing, probably in this case, dirt road has to be built up before, uh, you can start paving it. Um, and moving on to resurfacing, uh, the base price to resurface one mile of road is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That is very basic. That's probably just a chip seal. That's where you're just going to go across the road and put a thin layer on top of the existing structure. Uh, that's basically a preservation of the road and nothing more. It patches it and gets, gets you further down the road, with plenty of tennant. It patches it and gets you further down the road, with plenty of tennant. But to really do a resurfacing correctly, you probably need to double that, and you're looking at roughly $350,000. And the reason for that, if you notice when major roads resurface now, there's an extra two foot on the side. Have y'all noticed that? That is a safety thing, which I think is very, a very good thing, but it adds to the cost of the road. Now, they don't call that paving. They call that shoulder reconstruction or something like that. So I guess in their bylaws, and all that, I would call paving. Anyway, that's a story for another day. But anyway, I know for 2000, and we're working on 2016 funds, but we've already made decisions for 2017. And the money we have allocated is gone already. And we, I think we resurfaced five roads, and we decided to pave one road. And the one road we're paving is two tenths of a mile, and it's taken $125,000 of a budget.
Do you recall where that is, Mr. Gleason?
Dryslane, I think.
What's that again?
Dryslane.
Dryslane?
Yes. And Glenn has my phone number, cell number. Get that from him. I can tell you now, it's 843-992-2249. If you ever have any questions, feel free to call me, and I'd be glad to answer them. But that's the road we'll pave for this year. And that being said, when we decide to pave a road, number one, it has to have a petition. And every road, person living on that road, has to sign the petition. If it's not all signed, we can't move forward. I had a case two years ago, Joe Drive, like in around Riverdale area. Every property owner signed a petition. So we moved forward, spent X amount of money in engineering. I'm not going to tell you how much it was, but neither here nor there was a lot of money. But got down to the brass tacks, and the next phase is getting easements. The property owners must sign at the easement. But the property owner, one did not realize, wow, I've got to give up a little bit of my land to pave the road. Went and signed. So we lost that road, right there. We had already engineered it, with PD COG, and spent money doing that, and could not proceed. Spent about $12,000. So it's not that we're reluctant to jump on paving dirt roads. There's a lot of factors go into that. Number one, the cost of it, how much money you have to put into engineering the road, which comes out of our funds. And also, the risk that someone's going to back out. And then number four is you're putting another road into the system that's going to have to be maintained. And I think there are certain occasions where paving roads are a necessity, and we do do that, and we try to look at one every year. But we try to focus on resurfacing roads. And we try to work with the local DOT to piggyback with what they do. And like, they, they have a list of roads they do with the county every year. And where they can do one section, but they can't do the other, but that other section isn't just as great a need, we try to piggyback and finish that. And sometimes we do roads in sections. And I got two examples. We did Fordtown Road in Lakeview over three years, because of the length of the road. Well, if we'd have done the whole road, we'd have put all the money there and could not disperse it amongst the county, or the whole county like we should have. So we did that in three sections. Sunset, we're finishing up 2017, and we did that in two sections. So.
Let me tell you, anybody have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a person that lives in my district, and she said she did sign a petition, and I think some of the road had been paved, but I think where she was was left out, where she was on that petition.
Yes, ma'am.
Had gotten missed, left off. And she was wondering, you know, because she's still, yeah, it's been quite a while now since that's been done, and she's still trying to get her part done. It's about, it's not like a whole block.
Can you tell me what the name of the road is?
Who is this? Jerry Court?
Jerry Court. Now, is it out of subdivision?
No.
Okay. So that's a new addition.
She's just out, not there.
We are working on petitions for paving from the late 1990s. So that shows how far it goes back. We probably have 30 or 40, what I call, active petitions. We have weeded through. Mr. Stacy kept a good list of ones that needed to be in the system to work up. But we've had to reclarify, as time has gone by, like subdivisions, we're not allowed to spend state funds in a subdivision. If it's not county maintained, we can't, we can't touch it. In fact, the county has an ordinance, a Dillon County Road Acceptance and Maintenance Ordinance, which we go by it.
But on that petition, the other part of the road that, that was for that petition was done.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was completed.
Yes, ma'am. Do you know when that was completed?
I have to find out. I'm not exactly sure. That was before, I guess, at least, that must have been over two years.
Okay. I can do some investigating on that.
Was that South 9th Avenue?
Um.
Because Jerry Court's off of South 9th.
No, not South 9th. It was, it's my block, Earl Street, that street.
Okay.
I think that street and, and I think that 9th Avenue was the one, I think it's like a bend in also. But she was just a part of that, except it happened to a road bend that wasn't paved at that time.
And yes, Earl, make sure I understand this, and maybe Councilor too.
Okay.
Also, priority is depending on how many people live on the road.
Well, I was getting ready to get into that. Actually, since 2015, we kind of copied what Beaufort County is doing. And we have not formally adopted this, because we're still tweaking it. And it is a, basically a formula to decide how we do resurface and pave roads. We rate the condition of the road. How long is the road? How many houses on the road? Is it a school bus route? Even if it is a church, has a church on that road? If there's a cemetery there? If it's a mail route? There's a lot of factors that we go into deciding. And it's an informal system, and it's a point system that we use and have adopted, and it's really working well. We're going to tweak that in 2017 for our 2018, where say, if I live in a certain area, and I represent, so I live in Fork, I represent the Fork area, and I stand on my head as the Chairman and say, this road needs to be repaved. And I have six board members sitting around me saying, that road looks pretty good, and the road in my neighborhood really looks bad. And in reality, their road does look worse than mine, but I live in Fork and I want it resurfaced. Well, that's going to negate that, because if the board members do as they're supposed to do, they will each rate that road one to three, one being top priority, three being less. And so that will cut out instances where one board member can usurp power of the rest of them.
And when she signed the petition, like if they knew how many houses was on it at the time, then they let her sign the petition.
I, well, that, if it's, that length of time in the past, we probably didn't have that system in place. We're just doing this now, with this, it's 2014 we adopted this policy. Or not adopted, but sort of working with it. So I can look into that, be glad to get back in touch with Glenn on that, and find out exactly what happened, or why it was not completed. There's a lot of variables, like I say. It could have been lack of money at that time. So. Interesting to note to this council, I talked to Glenn for about two years now about repaving the parking lot here. What I call, I guess, the city-county complex is, that's here. And we actually engineered this with the PD COG. We worked up two ways. Sandy Warford, the engineer. And we were on go for 2017 to do this, and the cost of approximately $204,000. Well, lo and behold, someone from Marlborough County complained to the State Transportation Committee about parking lots being paved. And so the Attorney General, who at this time is the higher authority, because no one above him has changed anything, has said that parking lots cannot be used with C fund money to, to pay, to resurface. So we're sitting on standstill on that. And the reason I say standstill is because it's caused such a ruckus throughout the state that the only people who can change it is the legislature. And each one of their members has gotten calls saying, we've had projects that are in the works. This project was getting ready to be in the works. But it had to come to a complete standstill. Unless the work was actually being done on the day that the State Attorney General made his ruling, it could not go forward. But we are confident that, that it's going to be overruled in January by the House and Senate. And when that time comes, we do, are going to, that is a priority, is to do that project. But as you see, you know, talking about limited funds, if we're getting roughly $800,000 a year, a little more than that, and we're giving 25% to the state Mitchell's people, that leaves us with $600,000. We put 200 on this parking lot, that leaves us with $400,000 others dispersed throughout the entire county. So like I say, there's a great need for what we do, and there's just very little funding. And the answer is not at our level. It's in Columbia. So.
All right. Listen, we've got a lot to offer.
Well, the committee, I think, is tries to be very fair. I have reached out to Glenn, who's top of the mood. And we try to work with the local municipalities, first Lady Dillon, Atlanta, and try to work our way up. We have six members currently on our board. One is inactive, or seven with one inactive. We're trying to get back up. We're also going to change our bylaws. We'll show what's listed here is, is going to be changed, where our board is going to be reflective of county council, seven seats. So each member lives in a part of the county, and say, if Mr. Edward Ford represents the Lakeview area on the Transportation Committee, and someone says they have a road problem there, I direct them to him, and he brings it to us. So we're constantly tweaking the system.
Appreciate it. Glenn has Earl's number. If y'all have any questions, get Glenn.
Please tell me anytime. That's, that's what's left over here for us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This time, Citizen Report. Nothing going forward. unfinished business ordered in 1613, allowing stands and boxes on the streets and sidewalks. Only thing I got to ask about that, is there a limit on the number of boxes on a particular street?
Hmm.
Is there?
No, sir.
And it's still going to be left up to the Board of Architectural Review to approve? Only thing, you got four businesses on your board.
I understand.
Okay, so that's the only question I would have, sir. But that's that with the Board of Architectural Review.
Yes, sir.
But, I have a second.
Hall of Fame, I oppose. New business ordered in 1614, amend zoning regulations for commercial agriculture and agricultural permitted uses. Ordered in 1615, amend zoning regulations to establish a rural district. And ordered in 1616, prohibit unlawful loitering at Lockhamee Courtyard, which is already being enforced now, which has been a great improvement.
1614 and 1615 is the areas of where we have property in the city that's being farmed. 1614, being, make sure I'm saying this right, is what can be done in residential areas, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then 1615 is what can be done in what we're now calling rural?
Commercial.
Rural commercial.
Yes, sir.
Just to kind of make sure everybody's all on the same page, we use Rafford Boulevard as an example.
Yes, sir.
Along the area where Taco Bell is, that area could not be farmed, correct?
That's correct.
But the area behind it, beside Walmart, down Commerce Drive, can be.
Yes, sir.
So Commerce Drive, isn't it?
Yeah, they were under the rural area.
And I think.
There's a map that's attached to the ordinance.
Right.
And all the yellow colored area is the rural commercial.
But to be clear, Commerce Drive was, any farming on there now or prior to this was, weren't zoned for that anyway.
That's correct.
They were outlawed as anyone.
Okay.
But as far as the residential, you don't understand.
Well, when we say residential, let's go down South 9th Avenue. You got farming in that area. That is allowed.
Yeah, it was allowed.
Eighth Avenue where Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that, but this would be more of a larger, commercial type farming. If you're talking down Eighth Avenue, that was more a personal farming type deal. Or if you go down Martin Luther King Boulevard, right before you get to Pepsi, Old Pepsi plant, some of those areas there, Madison Street, in front of here, rounds, old place, that still would be allowed.
We try to be accommodated, we are also, if you think.
So the area in yellow on the map, that's the area that would be allowed.
Yes, sir.
At cost.
For what we call in residential, or is that rural?
That's rural.
That's rural up there, yeah.
People say, I've been called on that, commented on that, that Mike Davis went back home. But that's ordered in 1616, those 1615, 1614. I got a.
Make a motion.
I got a second.
I'll say.
Hall of Fame, I oppose.
And then ordered in 1616 is to not allow any loitering, other than Lockhamee Courtyard.
Make a motion.
Hall of Fame, I oppose. We got that watched. Okay. Counsel, any more questions, Earl?
Yeah, Mr. Jack, you know what we're going to talk about after the election. First of all, is there a big backlog in the courts, in the city courts right now? And we're going to talk about women's defense, with Mr. Rivers. Have we got, where we at?
We haven't done anything, except we kind of put it on hold. I'll get back to you.
Um, I want to talk about the wellness center. I'm going a different route than that. I spoke to several people, and I'm glad Keith Bailey's here, that he can vouch for this. The equipment, I've had a lot of people ask me, can we do something as far as getting some new equipment for the freeway section of the wellness center? A lot of the equipment's really out of date now for what you want to do as far as freeways. The reason I bring it up, we got $900,000 of hospitality money. Now, I realize we got some things getting ready to come out of that. But what I would like to see is, let's look at that side of the wellness center.
And we are. Dr. Wallace, he mentioned this to me probably two or three months ago. And what we'd like to have, and Todd, Paige and I have talked about it, is if those folks will just come to him, to let him know what they're looking for.
What they have to do, they have to.
Well, we tried that, we tried that about a year ago.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to show up.
Well, they had a suggestion box. People said, could you suggest?
Or, most of the suggestions that they had were, but that's what needs to be done.
You need to get something like. Can we also try to get Todd to make himself available to the guys when they're working out? Maybe go speak to them, because I don't think they're actually going to go to him. That's why they came to me, they mean, it's for Dr. Wallace. Come to Todd.
Do we have any idea what they're talking about?
I really don't.
And that's what needs to be done.
One of the biggest, one of the biggest, these out there are your dumbbells. They did replace the lower weights, but from the 50s on up, I think it replaced the 80s and maybe the 100s. But those weights are, people are trying to tighten them. Won't stay tight. The wrench is tight, and the hose is all around them. A lot of them's cutting their fingers and stuff, trying to tighten them up. And other stuff, like I say, just like the.
We're talking about dumbbells?
The dumbbells, yeah. That's one of the biggest, biggest thing. And just those, I mean, just older, but I mean, steel weights, you can't hurt steel weights. I mean, just a lot of stuff that's taken over these days, on the hammer strength machines that you put brake weights on, and that's a lot of what people's talking about is in there.
Right.
It's just those benches, they were thinking of the same bench that we give to the hospital from the clouds, whenever that was, that was given, whenever they moved that stuff to the hospital. And they gave it to the city when they went out there.
Try to listen to them. I mean, we got this new swap rack.
Yeah, we got another piece that we've got to reclaim. What's that one on the back wall, Keith? If you walk in on the weight room side.
Are you talking about the machine that's got the two pulleys?
Yeah, what is that?
Well, you've got one, you've got one locked down on the other side, in the far corner over there.
On the fence side, yeah.
It's basically the same machine. And really, if you had a couple of those in there, you could take, because that one there is really going to get somebody hurt. It's so long.
It is.
And it's rocking back and forth, and it really needs to be taken out of there. That's a. But that's a big machine, a lot of people work out and they do a lot of their exercises that machine. But the same, same machine that's got it in the corner on the other side, a couple of those in there, I mean, would make a lot of difference.
Oh, and let them know also whoever spoke with you.
I would, I would have nothing I'd wrong do.
But just, if nothing else, if they'll just go online and show us, you know, bring a copy of what they're looking at.
Well, I've got a book that I can give to Todd with all those, those stop machines.
But I mean, there's no reason to go out and spend a lot of money on something nobody will go buy.
Right. You could be a big advocate on that. I didn't know where we got the $37,000 for the state drug money. We had that revenue. Do you understand that?
It was motor grader and a hop.
Surplus.
Yeah.
That was, that was back in the, that was sold on job deals. That was part of the place department.
I want to go back one more thing, we talked about it, I want to keep reading it up. The contractors that are working for the state, are they working in the city limits right now?
Today, I could not tell you, I didn't see them today. I've seen them today, they have work zone.
Okay. But we pretty much don't need their help, is that what we're saying now? We pretty much have everything normal?
No, we don't take any help. But I mean, thereafter, what we thought in the beginning would be, they were going to pick up the heavy loads because they were getting paid based on weight. We're really, they're not really getting paid based on weight, they were getting paid based on. Fill up truck fast as they can. They wanted to. The quicker they flew. The more loads they took, the more money they got. That's all they interested. So they were here kind of bouncing left and right, didn't really have a, a plan of where they were going to be. So hopefully they're going to come back. Supposedly in the contract with the state, they're supposed to pick up these stumps and things of that nature, but as we talked in the beginning, I didn't want to wait on it. I want to go ahead and pick up, because one, we don't, we've got to work anyway. And it's not costing us any landfill cost.
But I was just trying to get over, I see Brown's Tree Service coming in front of my house and I see the seedy knuckle going on the other side. So I'm just trying to get a understanding of they about get.
We don't, I mean, we don't know.
I hear about something, Janice said just now, get on my sofa, just a second, about flood insurance. There's a lot of confusion about that. Every piece of property everywhere is mapped by FEMA and designated as a zone, a flood zone, based on the likelihood of flooding in that area. And Jack on the river would be in a zone that would be a lot more likely to have flooding than in the city of Dillon. Most of the city of Dillon is what's called an X-zone, which means there's a very low likelihood of flood. It's basically flat land where there's no water source that can cause flooding from a river or a stream or anything like that. And the rates for flood insurance are based on the high percentage. If you're oceanfront at the beach where you get wave wash and the water that's pushed across, that's obviously the most dangerous type of flooding. The flooding across the country over the last 10 years has primarily not been upon the coast. It's been in rural areas around rivers. But the misconception that we're hearing right now and that we face every day is that because you're in an X-zone, you don't have to have flood insurance or you don't need flood insurance. Now, what's happened is over the years, mortgage companies have said, if you live in an X-zone, you don't, you are not required to carry flood insurance as part of your mortgage. But it doesn't mean, obviously, if we found out the city of Dillon, that you can't be flooded. Any surface water that backs up, it's rainfall that comes down and it backs up, whether it's just in your yard or multiple yards or on a corner or any area, is considered flood. And it's not covered under any type of policy other than a flood policy for buildings or homes. Now, cars and contractors' equipment, stuff like you guys use are covered based on the animal or rain type coverage. But houses and businesses have to have a separate flood policy to be covered. And we've seen in the city of Dillon that if you're in a low-lying area where storm drains back up, Main Street, Harrison Street, Second Avenue, Eighth Avenue, those areas can flood. You can buy flood insurance in an X-zone.
Lee Circle floods.
Yeah. I mean, now, there are areas in Dillon that are not X-zone, around the, a lot of the ditches that we talked about where water flows through the Red Bull or coming off of some of the swamp, out floods are not in X, are not X-zone. And mortgage companies do require flood insurance in those areas. You need to know that just because you're in an X-zone, that you're not going to get flooded and you have to have a coverage. It's not expensive necessarily in an X-zone.
Do you have any idea an estimated cost? I've been told four, $600 bucks.
Yeah. For a $100,000 house, probably $400, $500 a year. Now, hopefully, you know, things are not going to come back and remap a lot of these areas down there because of the experience that they have. They only do that every so often anyway. And they've just completed. Who's one of the people to be aware of?
Getting side of a boat in my front yard. I don't want to be caught. I'll have you.
The only thing I've got is, Burke, and I'm not sure, because I've talked to you a couple times since the hurricane, and we want to try to identify trees that have been damaged, that look as though an ice storm is going to take them on down. I mean, I know we've got a lot going on now, but we've probably got, what, a good month, month and a half before we start looking, maybe first of January is usually when we start getting ice storms. But if we got anything like that in place, we're going to try to identify.
We don't have anything.
Especially, you know, even more so when we live in the historical district. I can't cut a tree down because if it's on the right of way. Well, I mean, and a lot of the trees fail off the right of way. So I don't know, I mean.
I run around and see what, you know, needs to be done, right like the drainage. We have one, a lot of people don't realize, we have one crew.
Oh.
That does everything.
Oh, I know. But what, but at the same time, is, is, uh, duty, also needs to come in to identify some of this.
They state, you know, most of the trees are on state right of way.
Right.
And you'd think a lot of the damaged trees, they would assess them off of it.
Right.
For them. But whatever we can do, if there, you do have one and you know it, let me know.
Because I've got a feeling that there's a lot of trees out there that were on the borderline of falling. The first ice storm or two, we may have some bad damage again. So I just.
Burke, don't bring a bad look to us.
Well, not, but at the same time, if there's one out there that we can get rid of before it falls, we're just going to offer, you know, whatever.
I asked for one, this is a, one was the king up there across the old basket factory, one is leaning. I don't know if anyone notices or not, but I don't think it takes much to come down.
Yeah, we've seen.
You've seen it? It's locked. Take the driver there.
That's all I got.
Anything else?
Let me mention this, you're talking about the, we're talking about the farming in the neighborhoods. And I want to do the air poisoning those, that area, because I'm trying to think I've seen them do that. With the planes.
I don't know if they do or not. I don't know. I don't think they would in that area.
How do they do it? Can they try to drop the leaves on them?
I'm not sure.
Think they poison.
Really, with the airplane?
So, sure. I'm not sure.
Decobias is the word. I'm not, I've never, I've never seen one, but I'm seeing they don't. Or unless they do it on a, off of a tractor, I'm not sure.
Say it loud.
And I've, I've never seen them spray within the, within the paint. I've seen them outside.
Can you remember that, seen them do that?
I would imagine that area, it would probably be done off of a tractor.
I've got the attention now since it's so close.
Yeah. Glenn, let me ask you one question. Are we spraying mosquitoes now?
We have been, I don't know, we're out of poison or if you're doing or. Well, she's messed up. We sprayed, I think, last week and the week before that, but we had a reappearance with the machine. It got flooded. All of a sudden, we thought we had it fixed, but now it's.
I got laddered, called laddered, sprayed where the utility guys, where they came up, they were laddered too.
Did we get a, we didn't get a frost last night. Yes, sir. Hopefully, mosquitoes will get a lot better here for sure. Supposed to be 31 a week.
All right. Anything else to give to the council?
Make a motion. A second.